My pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, November 13th, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please note texting, silence, or turn off your cell phones during the meeting. I also have another announcement. The district received a complaint that during public comments, certain residents receive more time to speak than others. So to be consistent, not offensive, and fair to all, Allison Lee, hold your hand up. Allison, everybody knows who you are, will be the official timekeeper and notify the speaker when they have reached two and a half minutes so that they can complete their comments within the three minutes allowed. I need a motion to approve...
Excuse me, who complained?
I have no idea. I just was told that, so I don't...
So you're making an assumption that somebody complained?
No, I think somebody did complain.
Who told you that they complained?
District office told me.
Okay.
I didn't ask. I don't care. I need a motion to approve action agenda consisting of the regular board meeting minutes from Friday, October 9th, the treasurer's report for September 2015, and also Resolution Number 2015-102346, a resolution of the Sunning Lake of Sebring Improvement District to confirm the members of the 2015-2016 Assessment Appeal Committee pursuant to District Policy D-1004.
Motion approved.
Second?
I have a couple of comments. Tanya, this last report, of course, is a summary of the entire year's budget, and by and large, it's a pretty good scorecard. But I want... One question, one comment. We're down 144,000 on assessments this year, which I think is perhaps the first time we've dipped a little bit. It's only 4%. 4% is 4%. Do you have any thoughts on that? Any underlying reasons, or...
We budget our assessments based on what we believe that we're going to receive during the year. It's a cash basis-type budget. I do know that in 2014, our collections were much higher due to certain reasons and sales of property and whatnot. We based our projections hoping that we would receive the same amount of assessments during 2015. We were not able, you know, to collect as much, but going forward, we're just going to have to increase our ability to foreclose and to collect and to send letters to the property owners.
It wouldn't be a bad idea to let the board know in absolute terms what our assessment totals have been the past five years, you know, year by year, just to see.
We can send you a five-year analysis, yes.
The other thing that struck me was in building, maintenance, and grounds. We had a budget there of almost, well, a little bit over $900,000, and we spent less than half of that. And if we budget for that, then there's a reason for that budgeting. And I think in our previous Public Works Director, we've been way under in this category for quite some time. And what's the point of budgeting if you only spend $400,000 out of the 900? Now, I know Mike Hurley has been appointed head of this, and I hope we'll see some, what should I say, more calculated expenditures in terms of needs than we've had. And that, compared to all the stuff that we look at, that's just a glaring example.
It is, and it's due to the projects. I mean, we have some projects that are budgeted in the buildings and grounds that we've had to carry over to 2016, one being, you know, the EMS fire station. We've had that contribution sitting out there for years, our maintenance facility, and then, of course, the signage and landscaping project. Those are projects that we've had to carry over to 2016. So I agree that we haven't spent what's budgeted there.
You gave a very good answer to that, and if that's the case, that we're... It's because of carryovers and not because of not addressing building maintenance needs, although that has been an issue, then that looks a little bit better. But I hope with Mike, and he's in the audience today, that we'll see a pretty concentrated effort in that area.
I agree.
That's all. Is that anybody else?
Didn't part of... Because we got a large settlement from the hotel, didn't that help part of the assessment increase?
Yes, in 2014, yes, sir. When that hotel sold, there was five years of assessments collected at that time.
Thank you.
Back to the board? Call the roll?
I'm waiting on him to get to his...
Okay.
Yo.
Up on top there, Dick. Rich, I keep calling him Dick. Rick?
Can I introduce you two guys?
I just... My younger year, Richard's were dicks, so I have a hard time changing. That's okay. It shut off, so that's fine. They got it.
Supervisor Holbert?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President McCullough?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve Resolution 2015-1023-47, a resolution of the Sunning Lake of Sebring Improvement District approving the 2016 meeting schedule for the regular meetings of the Board of Supervisors and establishing the paid holidays to be observed by the district staff. I still move? Second? Any comments?
Yeah, I've got a little concern about the fact that June, July, and August, we've only got... We've got over three months, we've got one... Only one meeting a month, and that's the time we're putting budgets together. That's the time when everything stacks up. And I just think... I just think that the schedule is... Needs to be looked at, and maybe slip another meeting in there, because we've got workshops, we've got public hearings, we've got budget stuff to do, and I just think it's... It's not a good schedule.
It's a little late, yeah.
Well, we're down to six months where we only have one meeting per month, and I'd have to agree with David because particularly this past summer is showing a lot of things to cover, and budget and workshops, and everything was important part of that. I don't know if you want to schedule something, or if you want to just make sure that there's no hesitation in scheduling additional meetings if you need them.
I think that'd be a good approach.
Yeah, they got a better idea if it's stacking up. If it's stacking up, we need to put another meeting out there, or put it into schedule, and then if it looks like it's going to be something we can carry over to the next, we can always cancel one. But I just don't feel comfortable.
What's your pleasure?
We can... The board has the ability to add a meeting now, or we can add a meeting if we need to. It's... Eighteen meetings has been the number of meetings that have been consistent over the last so many years. So, but we're... You know, anytime we can add a meeting, or at the pleasure of the board, we can do so today.
I've asked this before, but I've always been curious why we only have one meeting in March.
Well, the fourth Friday in March is Good Friday.
Well, I think also, as a member guest, has always been the last weekend of the month.
We've had conflicts with golf in March as well, but for 2016... Is that correct? Good Friday falls on the fourth Friday of March, so we only have one meeting scheduled for March this year.
I don't mind adding one, as long as there's no reluctance to do it, because we've got a schedule.
Yeah.
That's my point. I just... I mean, you can tell what's coming up, and if we need to add a meeting, we need to add a meeting.
Absolutely.
If there's conflicts with something or somebody, that's just the way it is, you know.
Okay. Sounds good. Any more comments?
Should add one in June.
Well, we're going to add it on the fly. As if we... In April or May, we think we need one in June, we'll add one. Okay? With you?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Public comment?
Tom Costy, resident, I'll make this quick. It's been eighteen meetings a month since we increased the per-meeting pay to the board, approximately the last three years. Prior to that, going back about ten years ago, there were thirty meetings in a year. And one of the things that... One of the byproducts of only one meeting a month is that the board gets their backs against the wall and times to consider issues that come up at the meeting, and they then have to vote without having adequate time to give full consideration and to discuss with their constituents the effects of resolutions that are coming before the board. So I'm concerned about creating a situation where supervisors are away during the summertime, and we might have as many as six weeks between board meetings when you're considering budgets, which is one of the most important jobs you have to do. Thank you.
Back to the board?
This includes the holiday schedule, this resolution?
Yes, sir.
Is it exactly the same as it has been, the same as the county, and so on and so forth?
Yes, eleven holidays, yes, sir.
Okay.
Call the roll?
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Holbert?
Yes.
President McCullough?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve Resolution 2015-1023-48, a resolution of the Sunning Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve Budget Amendment Number Three to the 2016 Budget to Carry Forward Project Costs for Certain Capital Projects Not Completed During the 2014-2015 Fiscal Year. So moved. Need a second?
Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, the 29,500 award to the alarm company, is that still contested? What is the status of that?
It is no longer contested.
So we're okay with that?
So we're going to move forward with signing the contract, yes, sir.
And you promise that the 9,000 for tennis will see us through this nightmare?
It will see us through. We have an invoice. Welch, when they finished last week, they've sent us an invoice, yes, sir.
We have a silent moment to...
Any more comment? Halbig comment? Back to the board? Call the roll?
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Holbert?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
President McCullough?
Yes.
Next on the action agenda is a district attorney evaluation discussion. I'll just open it up to the board members, and somebody want to take the lead on it?
Well, my evaluation this year was, I guess, fairly harsh, but in my opinion, there was very good reason for that. And I felt in this last year that Mr. McClure basically lost his objectivity with regards to district affairs, and it manifested itself in a variety of ways. And I guess, in my opinion, that if one thing we can depend upon, it's the objectivity of our attorney. Now, I know that the baton has been passed to David Schumacher, and I had, I think, a long and positive discussion with David about all the situations and my concerns. And David, and correct me if I'm wrong, but David has assured me that objectivity will not be an issue in the future, and that... And this is very important, that David, you're your own man when it comes to your opinions and assessments and support for district affairs. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, yes, sir.
Well, given that, then I think, in my opinion, we can go ahead with the firm and with David we've had.
I also had a meeting with David Schumacher, and I think we had a... Come to an understanding. I clearly did not give a very good report. Matter of fact, it was probably the worst report that I've ever filled out on anything. I have clear reasons why, and I've talked to David about them. He understands them. And so I will... I will say that we just have to wait and see how it goes in the future, to see how my opinion... If my opinion changes, or if it gets worse, or it gets better.
I don't have anything. All righty. So do we have to vote on this, or we just go forward with it, then? I mean?
A board consensus to move forward with signing a contract for another year with McClure and Lebozo?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that should be a formal motion.
I'll prepare a contract as done previously, and we'll bring that to the board for a vote.
You know, this is the first time in years that this evaluation's been a point of discussion
for the board. It never was before. Everybody turned it in, and it was just put in the file. Same thing with the general manager evaluation, there was a discussion. So there wasn't a formal vote on it. It was just a... Here's the evaluation, there it is. I don't know why we have to formally vote on... I mean, we've got a contract, there's benchmarks on the contract, so on and so forth, so I don't see any reason why we have to vote on it, but I mean, we can if you think it's necessary.
Yeah, I'll check to see what's been done in the past, but my recollection is that once the contract is drafted, the board does vote on the contract.
Yeah, look, I think this is an important part of our overall district administration, and we should treat it as such. And I agree with David, in the past, it's sort of been, you know, bam, bam, and, you know, we go on to the next year's contract. So I think we've taken the time this year to spend... I know I have spent more time, and I think that should be recognized by the board.
Okay, all righty. We'll proceed on that. Any add-on items?
None.
Petitions, communications?
Yes. We received a draft ordinance from Highlands County yesterday. This ordinance, I explained in my memo... I'm going to let David Schumacher kind of take the lead on this, but essentially, the Board of County Commissioners is making the statement that any lots that they acquired through the estatement process, the district cannot place an assessment levy on these lots. And we're still trying to interpret the ordinance, because the issue now is we're looking at future liens. We know that once the county owns the lot through estatement, then all the debts have been wiped away, all the bonds, all the assessments. We have done our part as far as... The county has about 1,200 lots so far that they've received through estatement.
1,200?
Approximately 1,200, and that continues to grow every single month. So this was just brought to our attention by the county, just to inform us that they will be approving an ordinance on November 3rd.
Voting on it.
Voting on it.
What options do we have? We have no options, do we?
Well, we're going to have a talk with the district's representative, Mr. Handley, you know, raise our concerns. And the concerns, I think, we are very valid. Obviously, the estatement process is statutory. We don't have any power over that. But for the county to come in and say that they're going to prohibit the district from levying future assessments, or all future assessments while these lots are held by the county, I'm not sure that they have the statutory authority to do that, because that basically means that the county's property gets dealt with differently than everybody else's property. So we're going to look into it and see if they can provide some answers as to why they've taken this position, tending to the point that, you know, this property may sit for five or six years, and then suddenly a developer comes in and pays, you know, $5 million for these 1,200 lots, and the county gets to pocket all that money while we've been sitting here, you know, unable to assess them. We're going to look into it and see if this is something that we want to put our foot down on and force the county to show its legal reasoning for why they think they can do this.
David, does that mean that they just want those properties to be in limbo as far as assessments is concerned, as long as they own them?
Correct.
But at that point where they transfer them over, they're back...
That's correct.
Okay.
But they're saying that are even future assessments, because like I said, we just went through our billing cycle. These lots estated to the county previously, and they became into the county's possession, and we've now billed them for their... For this year's assessments. This law has not... If this law goes into effect, or this ordinance gets amended, it won't get amended until the third. Well, our billing cycle is already completed. So what does that mean? Does that mean that this new billing cycle gets wiped away? These are the questions we're going to be asking.
They've never paid assessments anyway, have they?
Understood, understood, but the issue...
The issue is future.
Yeah, the issue is future, because they're saying that once they... Anything that they take through the estatement process cannot have any assessments levied on it until they transfer that to a third party.
Yeah, I guess my question... My basic question is, we don't have... Even now, we don't have the power to enforce assessment payments by the county. Is that correct?
Correct, that's correct.
So this is... This is just sort of formalizing what's always been the case.
Well, the concern is, is future. I mean, we're talking about a half a million dollars here for these 1,200 lots, and every year the lot isn't sold, we put another half a million in play. So when they are sold, we get to collect that money. No, we're not going to collect it from the county, but we can collect it from the new owners of the property.
But the county's telling us that we can't actually place the levy.
David, is that correct?
That's what we're trying to ascertain, because what this ordinance would do would be to prevent that, because this ordinance prevents us from levying assessments on these properties.
Do you have any background on why they suddenly decided to do this?
I do not have any background. I hope Mr. McClure does.
No, but I think the point that Kurt raised is quite valid, then.
I agree as well, especially if the county were to find some developer that come in and snap them all up, and then pay, you know, several million dollars, the county shouldn't be allowed to just pocket all that money.
Do we have any leverage at all in this?
I don't know. We have to... I'm going to check statutorily, yes.
Does this mean that the property they owned prior to this ordinance being passed was taxable or assessable?
Well, I think that would be... They have other properties, and that would be my argument, is that if this does go through, then that's kind of by definition, anything that wasn't or isn't owned by the county through the estatement process would be assessable.
Right.
So unless it's been declared non-assessable through some other means, I would say that yes, we would have a very good argument to say, hey, you guys need to start paying assessments for any other differently-held property.
Do we plan to be represented at that November 3rd meeting at the county?
Well, we're going to... Like I say, we're going to meet with Mr. Handley the next Thursday? Is that what you told me?
We don't have a meeting set yet.
Okay, we don't have a meeting set. We're going to meet... We're trying to meet... Definitely meet with him before this meeting or this vote, and if that doesn't happen, then yes, I will be present.
So the board doesn't meet between now and then, so is there any position you want this board to take, or...
If you want to direct me to appear and ask for some reasoning, or for some validation for this position, yeah.
Well, yeah, I think we should be represented, not only by you, David, but perhaps by Tanya as well, maybe the president of the board.
I thought you were going to try to have a meeting with the lawyers, with the county lawyers, well?
Yes.
We are. Mr. Handley's out of town.
So you're going to try to get Handley in? What's his name again?
Ross Macbeth.
Ross Macbeth, yeah. I was kept thinking it was Brian.
We just found this out yesterday afternoon, so I need a little bit of time to organize that.
David, this...
What would be the difference with this than there was with the property that NRP purchased, other than the fact, I guess, they purchased that from Sunning Lake? And the county then pocketed all their back assessments or back taxes on that to the tune of about $4 million, if I can recall. I mean, trying to remember, but they came out better on this deal when NRPI came to town than Sunning Lake did. They pocketed a pile of money on that. It would be the same kind of a situation, other than the fact that this is all going to be stricken over to the county, and they can do with it whatever they want to, right?
Conceivably, yes. The main difference here is when the estatement process occurs, it wipes everything away. That includes old back taxes. So these things are, you know, these 1,200 properties are basically fresh with no liens against them at all. So I'm... The county would have a position to say, yes, well, since this, you know, since we took title to these properties through the estatement process, you know, that we could have been taxing them, but obviously, the county doesn't tax itself, so there should be no taxes accruing. The only thing that could accrue would be the district's assessment. So that's our point, is that if the county comes and sells, you know, these 1,200 lots for a massive amount of money, we should be included. We should be able to benefit from that as well.
Right. Looks to me like they're trying to cover some bases they hadn't covered before.
I agree.
That's what it looks like to me.
All righty, staff reports?
Tenille Jory Smith, Community Services Director. I'm just going to go through some events that we have coming up, the first of which is next Friday, where we have our annual trick-or-trot. Registrations are a little bit down compared to years past. We're not sure why. We've done the same advertising. It may be because there's a lot of 5Ks going on this time of year, and people might be getting burnt out. We still have probably between 350 and 400 people showing up for that, so it's still going to be quite successful. The next day, we have on Halloween, we're going to do our Fun Fall Festival from 2:00 to 5:00. And something that I mentioned briefly last time that we're going to incorporate is a pumpkin decorating contest, the Highlands Art League. We partnered with them in sponsoring and hosting it to, you know, kind of give back and also another part of our event. So they're going to hold a pumpkin decorating contest, carving that during the festival as well. So there's probably going to be a lot of people out here that day, plus we'll have the trick-or-treaters that evening. Then November 7th, we have a community cleanup day. We haven't had one in a while, and the beautification committee, when we met for the first time since we left for summer, we decided it was a good idea to have another one. So that will be November 7th, from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. We'll meet here. Any volunteers are greatly welcomed. November 10th, that's not something I have on there, but November 10th, we're going to have a re-grand opening ceremony for the racket club. We thought it was something that we should do, because it's been anticipated, and I don't know if any of you have been by the racket club this week, but it is definitely... It was missed, and it's being utilized quite heavily. So we've had quite a few memberships, signups this week as well, so that was a positive, considering we extended the current memberships for five months. Of course, we have the Pilgrim Palooza. I know when I talked to Megan, we already have 15 tables sold, and I don't know how many individual tickets, but it looks like it's going to be more successful than it was last year, which is hard to believe, because that was a great success the first time around. Then for Christmas, we're actually going to bring everything over here for the holiday festival this year, partly because the restaurant is so busy with Christmas parties and such, we thought it'd be better to have it over here. So it's going to have a Grinch theme, and we're going to do stuff inside, we're going to do stuff outside, but it's going to tie in... On December 6th, it's going to tie into our golf cart parade, that we're hoping to get a lot more entries. We had about 20 carts last year, and we're shooting for, I would love to see 40 or 50, so that would be a great thing. That will be that evening, about 6:30. So anyone interested, we'll be getting that information out shortly. Then the next, of course, we have our New Year's Eve party and fireworks, and then we'll have the community garage sale on January 9th. We've tentatively scheduled a pickleball tournament in February, and this week, we were approached by the college. We usually host their bike event for their Heartland Games, their Heartland Senior Games, and we have been approached to host their pickleball tournament, which was kind of exciting. And that's great exposure for the community, because these seniors come from all over the state, so that will be great exposure. We're not sure on the dates on that yet. I believe it's going to be in March, but we look forward to hopefully hosting that as well.
Do you keep a scorecard on...
Do you keep a scorecard on how many of our residents are involved in these activities versus outsiders? I've had a number of comments that said, well, we're doing all this, but 90% of the people are from outside Sun and Lake. Do we have a way of, in some of these events, not necessarily the 5K, although you have to register them, you get addresses?
Oh, yes, yeah, we have addresses.
Well, it would sure be good to see just how extensive our resident participation is in all of these events, because it is, bottom line is, in some cases, we make a little money, in most cases, we don't. It should be priority for the residents, and I'd like to see some kind of a scorecard on that.
It's going, I mean, for the run, certainly, that would be something that we can...
Well, for all these activities, I mean, you know, these are community activities, community being Sun and Lake. And I know it's open to outsiders, but I would certainly hope that we would have extensive participation by our residents. And if we don't, then I would question whether or not we should hold some of these events.
Well, it's definitely something that we would have to look into, trying to get some sort of survey. I can honestly say that I believe in seeing faces and people within the community, that it is heavily attended by our residents. And I know that part of our plan is to bring more awareness to Sun and Lake, and that's why, when I first started doing these events, that, you know, we bring people from the outside in as well, and possibly having interest in living here, because there's so much to do. So that's one of the visions that I have for the community. But I do believe, especially in also our summer camps, for, as an example, the summer camps are 85% filled by residents.
And that's documented?
Yes, because we charge us a lesser rate for residents than we do for outsiders for summer camp.
Well, Tenille, don't misunderstand me. I mean, you've done an excellent job on all these events, but, there's that, that, but I would just like to see more, I guess, a scorecard of just who's participating from within the district and without, you know, from outsiders and so forth, particularly in those events that we end up in red figures, which we do in some cases.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that there are a couple, most of the events of the past, especially over the past year, say, the only event that was in the red was 4th of July, and that one is probably always going to be, given that we spend so much on fireworks.
Yeah, well, we have a tradition there, and it's certainly a very popular function in the county. We're one of the, I think, the premier spots for that celebration, so that would, to me, would be an exception, but some of the other stuff, maybe not.
Thank you.
Anybody feel the same way?
I don't think it hurt anything to him. I mean, we're advertising our entity.
Jim Kurtzborn, General Manager, Sun and Lake Golf Club, Billy Casper representative. Just wanted to give you a synopsis. Want to apologize first that we don't have our monthly financials ready. With it being the end of the year, there's a little bit of delay, and we will get those to you in the next week to 10 days. We did experience an excellent financial year, an operational year at the club. Did basically set a lot of high watermarks and a lot of increased usage and increased revenue. Starting out with the golf, our total rounds increased 6%. Our member rounds increased 9%, and had a very good year with the outside play, our outside outings increasing 25%. We also had a slight increase in membership revenue, which I think is a little bit of a turn of the tide, and we are seeing this year that we're maintaining that, maintaining that increase. We were successful in building dollars per round, so the amount we've gotten per round went up 3.5% last year, which is a great sign of health for the golf course and a comment on the job that the team, David Bell and his team, is doing to increase the conditioning of the course. The contribution that's going to be required from the district is quite a bit less than budgeted, approximately in $150,000 range, so that's definitely a good sign of an accomplished team. I get to stand up here and take the credit, and I came in at the end. So that's always a good job. A couple of things, just to be of note, for the 22 days we've had in October so far, as I said, membership renewals are on track with last year, golf is on track, or maybe slightly ahead, restaurant revenue is actually trending ahead, which is a good sign. But that does create challenges in a number of instances. The increased outside activity that we're bringing in does affect our member experience, where we have members coming in at the end of their round in the 5 or 6 o'clock range, and the parties that we have from the outside coming in. So that's something that we have to manage. We'll be meeting with the group leaders in November, and I'll specifically be communicating with the group leaders that those outside activities affect more in the way that those groups are handled. But we're pretty much, that's just one of the challenges, of reaching capacity. One of our goals this year is to drive more of the revenue that we bring to the bottom line, because when you, as we're reaching capacity, that's the only way we're going to be able to push down the contribution, is to capture more of those dollars. So we will be working in our financials, because one of the parts of the financials that I've just found in the month that I've been here, is some of it's misleading in the fact, when you look at revenue and expenses, if we rent a chair for an outside function of $1.50, and then we charge $2 for the chair, you know, that shows as a $2 revenue and a $1.50 expense. And obviously, that raises your expenses, and it gives you a different idea. You don't think that's what's going to be reflected, but that does happen in a number of cases. Beyond that, I just would like to congratulate David and his team. They're doing a great job. That I've seen, the courses are really in excellent shape. They've been working hard to get deer, you know, ready for overseed and executing overseed, and then also Turtle is really in good shape. I'm very happy with the condition we've attained there. Still, we have a goal for Turtle for next summer at this time, to have much more coverage, and we're definitely aware of the extra attention that we're going to pay to detailing for the golf course. One thing I would like to address is, just during overseeding, we did, we had an outside group contact us that's been back and forth with us. We had the opportunity to entertain them on Saturday and Sunday, and that actually required us to open deer for that time. It was a time where it wouldn't affect the overseed, and if that decision came up in the future, we would revisit it and look at it again. But one thing we would definitely do if that did happen, is we would communicate that in the newsletter more, more completely, to make sure everybody's aware of the different changes. So I think the most important thing that we want to work on is just keeping the communication lines open. So beyond that, are there any questions about the financials or comments? Nope? Thank you.
David Bell, Golf Course Superintendent. Jim touched on a lot of the things that I was going to speak about, but just an overview of a few things. On October 13, we closed deer run for overseeding going into the season. This is a practice that we always do for the season. I'm very pleased with the take of the overseed that we've had so far. We actually, five days into it, we were already starting to see visual germination, which is, you typically have germination beginning after three days, but to be able to visually see it above the canopy is a very good sign. It's generally already germinated, but you have to dig around inside the canopy to see it, so to be able to see that visual germination is very good. We're going to be reopening on the 25th, this coming Monday. We'll probably, which will be, Tuesday will be two weeks, so the beginning of next week, we'll probably start doing our first mowing application, which is also early. Usually, we're looking at three weeks before we can start doing our first mowing, so that's just another good sign of how well the overseeding process is at the time. Some of the things on Turtle that we've been able to accomplish over the last month, we were able to get Triest to come out and do some spot applications to some of the fairway areas on the back nine of Turtle for curfew. Those areas, I think, are really going to help out some of these areas. We've also been doing some turf enhancement, sodding in a lot of areas. We've actually sodded probably almost an acre of turf in various areas, along with hand top dressing, some thin areas that we've been experiencing. We've been working with the district on cleaning up some of the scrub areas over this summer with some things that transpired. We got a little behind on some of the scrub areas, so we've been trying to catch back up on those areas, and just driving around the other day, I think they're all, they all look pretty good. And then some of the details, like Jim mentioned about, we're starting to clean out some of the beds, we're starting to eliminate a few of the beds on deer run, but just an overall, you know, trying to do a lot of cleaning and upkeep on some of the bed areas on both properties. So other than that, we've, we're getting ready for the new season, and it's, as of right now, I think it's, looks pretty good. Any questions?
David, how much sod have you lost of what you put down this year?
How much sod have we lost?
Yes, that have died.
I couldn't say. I don't feel like a whole lot. Yeah, probably less than 5%.
Particularly the bathroom on 15 on deer?
Yeah, the bathroom on 15 on deer was areas that, those were areas that were for Bahia grass, and there was a few areas on 15 up by 16 green, going to 17 tee box, those were some areas that are non-irrigated areas, that Bermuda grass did get laid there, but that was a very minimal part. Actually, this last week, we've been having issues getting Bahia grass this summer with the rains. We were able to get a truckload this week, so we were able to get those areas specifically replaced, along with some stuff on nine, and then through the front nine. We still have about one more truck left to finish on the back nine that we're going to be getting this upcoming week.
Thank you. From where I sit, I can see the germination's better this year than it's ever been. I can't believe it came, it's that quick. I don't know if they got a new seed, or a different kind of seed, or identical, that same application?
Other nature.
It's cooler. It's cooler this year.
You know, we got some rain, actually, right after we did the application, you know, so. One other thing, you know, prior to going into overseed, we do go around and spot treat some weeds in the fairways and the overseeded areas, you know, so you'll see some brown patches around. There is seed that's germinating in those areas. They do stand to stick out, because the backdrop of the Bermuda grass is off color, so you're not seeing, you know, that green backdrop of the Bermuda grass, but there is seed germinating in those areas, and once it gets mature, all those areas will blend out.
David, Jim had indicated we had some problems with our equipment purchase. Has that been resolved?
I'm working with, we're getting bids together with our state contract pricing. Out of the whole package, there's one piece of equipment that is not on the state contract purchasing list, that we're actually going to have to put out to bid. We're going to put that out this upcoming week, and it'll be at the next board meeting up for a resolution to go to purchase, the whole package. We're getting fairway units, we're getting rollers, we're getting top dressers, and utility cars, and some rock mowers.
Has anything been ordered, already ordered?
Not yet.
Thank you.
Code Enforcement? Michael Hurley, Public Safety. Code Enforcement, we have sent out 136 citations over the last month. We average, over the last three months, we average about 140. We've cleaned up the area that we've been, we have got a lot of complaints either front of Sun and Lake. Over the last three weeks, they removed four junk cars, a trailer that's been there for years, so I'm pretty happy of the way that people are finally reacting of the citations that we're giving. So we are cleaning it up, and I haven't had too many complaints this month for that area. I don't know if the watch orders, we're down about 100, because people are coming back. Everything's been kind of quiet on that area.
Tanya, you mentioned one of your communications. We have a meeting coming up with this consultant?
Yes, on October 30.
Okay, what do we, what do we hope to achieve by that? Is that part of the reworking of our ordinance?
Yes, our initial consultation with this attorney, Mr. Pritt, is to discuss the changes that, or the concerns that we have, and that Mike and Bob have, and to determine whether or not we can actually incorporate some of those changes into our county ordinance. So, and it's just an initial conversation. We just, we need to go over all the points that we have, all the concerns, and then we'll take it from there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Are you done? Oh, okay.
Security's been pretty quiet. We haven't had any crazy calls. We've got a few. We had a person hit a mailbox on Ponce. We had to call the sheriff in. He was arrested, but, you know, besides that, it's been pretty quiet, thank God.
Good.
Any other questions? The other thing that I want to bring up, for Tenille, she has been working, we have the Veterans Tournament coming up, and we have 250 golfers. We do have at least 200 residents that play in there, and Tenille has been working with me on that through the district, so I just, you know, and you didn't bring it up, I want to make sure. And I'm also bringing it up because I need checks from you guys for our hole sponsors, so.
What's the date of that tournament, Mike? The date?
The tournament's the 8th.
Oh, by the way, talking about your hole sponsor, I went to the Pro Shop a couple days ago to give him my check.
Yeah, I know that.
And he didn't know anything about it, so.
Well, they happened now, Andy's gone now. We met the other day. With Howard being gone, we're a little behind.
Well, you should send out an email or something to people, so they know what to do.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Shoemaker, you're up.
Not much new news. In the Ayala Severino matter, there was, there's some scrambling to get discovery completed, in compliance with the judge's order that it be completed by the end of the year. The interesting thing that I just found out is Judge Strata will be rotating out as the civil circuit judge, with a new Judge Raden will be coming in and taking over for him. So I don't know if that's going to cause any additional delay, but that's something we definitely don't have any control over. I did talk with Judge Cowden, who's the probate and juvenile judge, and said that she knew, or had conversations with Judge... or had conversations with Judge Raiden and felt he was very capable of stepping into the position, so hopefully we'll be okay.
You're talking about rotating out, is that not an elected, is that an appointed office?
Yeah, they're all, they're circuit judges, and so they, you know, some, the chief justice or chief judge in, I guess it's Lakeland, Polk County, I believe that's currently Judge Smith, but I'm not positive. Anyway, he rotates people around from time to time, and I think Judge Estrada's been doing civil now for over six years. Generally, it's only two-year rotation, so.
So, where would he go?
He, I think, is going to be going to criminal. He'll be doing criminal now, or back to criminal. He had done criminal for a very long time, and I guess he's going back.
And rotates out when?
End of the year.
End of the year, okay. Thank you. David, you were going to, as per the minutes of last meeting, on prepare some thoughts and advice on our special assessment structure for this drainage issue. Any progress on that?
Yes, sir, and one of the things that we're looking into is basically, there has, we need to show or be able to show an added benefit, and I think that's going to be the hurdle that we are going to, that we may not be able to overcome. Basically, what we'll have to show is that the proposed work that will be done is giving an added benefit to these individual properties. With drainage being a part of the standard assessments, it may be difficult for us to show that added benefit. I'm going to get with Gator, perhaps once he's done his, I believe his prior valuation was just, or his prior estimate was just based on lineal feat to do the entire job and that he was going to do a more comprehensive evaluation of what it was, what portions of work actually needed to be done. Once we have that, we can determine whether or not we can consider it an added benefit that we'd be able to warrant in a special assessment.
I may be wrong, but doesn't the county just pass those costs on to the homeowner when they're faced with the same situation?
I'd have to research that.
Okay, I think they do, but it would be good to know. David, on the foreclosure list, you know, just glancing through that, there are some properties that look like they're not paying, they're paying county taxes but never have paid assessments, and they're still, they're still on there, and it doesn't look like there's any activity. I mean, somebody needs to dust that off and take a look at that.
Okay, like I say, I think there's, we have, if I'm correct, we have dollar cutoffs? Is that how we do it? Once we've reached a certain point of assessment level, that's when we actually get everything initiated?
Right, the two-year delinquency mark, so it's not really dollars, but it's at the timeframe.
Two years you do that? There's some properties that, there's one property that I'm looking at, there's $6,000 worth of assessments owed and no county tax owed, and that property's probably been owed, I mean, it's probably, it's not on a golf course, so if you just look at the, do the math, it's more than two years by a long shot.
Okay. I'll take a look and see if I can find some specifics and get with the paralegal that handles that.
What's the reasoning for the two years? Can we shorten it up, make it quicker, in terms of acting?
Well, the process is that once the property becomes delinquent, after it's billed in November, becomes delinquent the following April 30th, at that point, it's one year, we consider it a delinquent at that point, okay? The district sends an initial letter to the owners of the property. We allow the owners of the property to either pay or to work out an agreement with the district on their one year, and that takes, the time that it takes to do that process and work with the homeowners, then typically, the second billing hits their property at that I mean, that process in itself, I mean, just at the one year, are you asking that we should turn it into foreclosure right at the point it becomes delinquent? We have to give opportunity for some because sometimes there's confusion. Sometimes the homeowner might have just purchased the house, and they say, "Well, I thought escrow was handling it." It gives, giving the district opportunity to contact the homeowner first is an appropriate procedure and allows us to work with them instead of just turning it immediately over to the attorney without any contact.
No, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just suggesting, do we have, does a process have to take two years? Can it be a year or a year and a half or something? In other words, don't let it fester so long, and I understand what you're saying, that you need to communicate with the people and kind of let them know what's going on, but two-year process seems like an awful long time to get to the point where, yeah, if I haven't had to pay it in two years, why should I pay it ever? I mean, I think you set a different mindset by allowing it to go that long, I guess. So, I'm just asking, maybe we should make it at one year instead of two years, you put the hammer down, or a year and a half or something, just react quicker, that's all I'm saying.
I shouldn't say two years. It's typically, once the assessment is billed, it becomes delinquent within five months. So, it's not, it's not really typically a two-year process. I know by the time that we implement our procedures and whatnot, but it does become delinquent within five months, it's not 12, to explain that.
But when do you turn it over for foreclosure? That is two years, though, right?
Typically, a year and a half. I'm just saying, it's a process that we have to go through, and then it's not necessarily two years, it could be about a year and a half.
David, does John McClure still handle the foreclosures in the district?
No, technically, that's still me. The, we have our foreclosure paralegal, that she generally oversees all that, she's the one that prepares that spreadsheet. I meet with her on occasion just to find out if there's anything that I need to be handling, because the majority of foreclosure work is paperwork, and there's.
So, that's under your jurisdiction?
Yes, sir.
General Manager's report?
The annual landowners' meeting will be held on Friday, January 22nd, 2016. President McCullough's landowner seat expires, and candidates must file a written notice of intent to be a candidate to the district between the dates of November 23rd and December 23rd. That's a 30-day period. Any notices of intent received after December 23rd, 4:30 PM, will be ineligible. This landowner seat upcoming will be a four-year term and not a three-year term. In the event of an election, the district's landowner consultant will be the Office of Penneog, the Supervisor of Elections for Highlands County. Does any of the supervisors have any questions regarding that meeting and how it will be conducted? All right, the county performed an inspection on the home located at 4114 Poncelion Boulevard. They found the home to be structurally sound with a fairly new roof. There has been some cleanup activity at this home, and this home is, there was concerns voiced from neighbors, but now that the interior has been somewhat cleaned up and there's no structural damage, the district hasn't received any further complaints about this home on Poncelion. And I'd like to give the board a brief year-end financial summary. The general fund was projected to use prior year fund balance in the amount of 1.7 million for different projects, for purchase of golf carts, purchase of GPS units, things like that, but according to our preliminary reporting, we only will be using about 550,000 of our fund balance. Of course, again, we have projects that are not finished, that were being carried over. So, our focus in the general fund is, I know we've added to fund balance for so long, it has created, you know, such large reserves, and now going in the future, we're, we are budgeting to use some of those reserves for these one-time projects. The, in total, the general fund missed its projected revenue collections by only 19,000. So, even though assessments were down, we did make up the revenue in other areas, and that's only about, that's only about 0.5% of our budget. The general fund expenditures in total were well under our budget. Again, that was because we didn't do as much paving. We had, you know, budgeted almost 500,000 in paving and other projects. The utility fund, we exceeded our projected revenue collections by almost 100,000, and that's almost 5% of our budget. And we are actually going to be adding to our utility reserves in close to about $450,000. So, again, these are just preliminary numbers. We haven't finished our year-end adjustments for these funds, so I just wanted to give the board an update.
I have a few questions. The clearing down there by Magnolia Place, is that Hornick starting those multifamily units?
Yes.
It is. What do we, where are we, I guess, at the present time with regards to this part-time benefit situation for benefits for the part-time employees?
We left the language in the employee manual to keep vacation and sick accruals for our part-timers.
Okay, you were going to give us a dollar amount, what that means to the district?
Last year, the payout for vacation and sick accruals for our part-timers was $7,740.
So, we're in good shape on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The dollar general situation that, was it Jack Nelson, I believe, came to the last meeting? Have we talked to Ramon or anybody down there?
I have, and I'm waiting on an update from Highlands County. They're going to follow up with the developer, so I haven't heard any feedback yet.
Well, we were at that same situation about a year ago, and nothing happened, so. The last thing I have is over this Kelly Payne invoice for these tree stumps, and there was a discrepancy on that because a certain portion of that was claimed to have been done, we found was, had not been done, and I think the last time you and I talked about that, you were contacting them for, see what was going on. Do we have a resolution of that invoice?
We do. Mr. Payne, or actually, I should say, Crossan and Payne agreed to give the district a credit of $360. They expressed their concerns with the situation and disagreed, but agreed to move forward and give us a credit.
They disagreed?
Well, they believe the work was done, based on, you know, and anyway, the situation's been resolved.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask you a question about that. I didn't know this was going to be an issue. I thought that was already done, but did you show them the supporting information that the emails and the memo that was put together by the golf?
I discussed it with them. I didn't show them or give them copies, but I discussed everything that I had, so.
You didn't show them those, the copies of the email that was generated or the memo that was put together by Mr. Bill?
No, I did not. I didn't produce that to them, but they, we, they agreed to give us a credit and to move forward.
Okay.
Unfinished business? Apparently not. New business?
None.
Okay, new business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comment?
I don't know if anybody's noticed, going north on Sunil Lake, I'm sorry, on US 27 from Sunil Lake up into Avon Park, but quite a bit of beautification has taken place in that Boulevard area. There's some, quite a number of brand-new palm trees, quite tall, that have been installed on the Boulevard. A lot of that has been done previously going south from, on US 27 from Sunil Lake by the county. I assume Avon Park probably did, or at least participated in that area, although it may have been part of the grants that came in for the roadwork. However, I'd like to consider the district looking into whether or not we could, either through a grant or through discussion with the landowners on the other side of 27 to continue that project across the front, the face of Sunil Lake. It looks real good, but we've got, with the lack of palm trees and with the overemphasis on electric poles and wires that takes place as soon as you hit the north entrance to Sunil Lake, it, I think it would behoove us to try to beautify that area somewhat. I don't know what the expense of doing something like that is, but I'd suggest we look into it. Secondly, I'd just like to say that I really understand, and I guess government for, by, and of the people is pretty inconvenient for those who are in government and who are elected to government seats. This new policy of curtailing public participation concerns me. The public has, well, as I said earlier, with going from 30 meetings a year down to 18 meetings a year, that seriously limits the amount of public participation that can take place in the governing process of Sunil Lake. I don't recall that anybody at the meetings that I've been to was denied the opportunity to come to the microphone to voice their opinion, anybody from the public. The fact that somebody's complaining about somebody getting more time than anybody else is, again, I say, it's, perhaps there's an interest in public participation. We have in the past, the district has, or the board has in the past decided, for whatever reason, that the public did not get to participate in workshops, even though if you look at case law in Florida for, with the sunshine law and the cases of public participation, the statutes and the cases, the findings were that the public is supposed to be able to participate in every step of the decision-making process. So, I'm concerned about the attitude that you think that these meetings have either gone on too long because somebody's too long-winded. I don't think the average time of these meetings is any longer than it was when we were having 24 or even 30 meetings per year. I'd just like to go on record with that comment. The other thing is, I'm curious about the county election supervisor. While I understand the thinking, was any, was that put out for bid? I mean, in the past, we've engaged or at least preliminarily discussed the situation with a private concern as opposed to getting the government, the county election supervisor to take this on, and the person or the company that we dealt with is very experienced with landowner meetings and et cetera. I'm not sure the county election supervisor has ever conducted a landowner election, which are, these are different, this is, these are much different than regular elections. So, my question is, did we get an estimate from the county of the cost for conducting the landowner meeting, and did we even contact the person that we had discussed this with in the past? Question.
We contacted Penneog. I'm sorry, I don't know of anyone that we contacted in the past. Joe De Cerbo, we did contact as well. He was hired in the case of an election. So, we don't know at this time if we're going to need an election. So, Penneog said that she would provide us a consultant in the case that we do need it.
Oh, she would provide us a consultant?
Penneog's office supervisor of elections will provide us a consultant in the case there's an election the day of the meeting.
So, you have no recollection or information about special district services and the recommendations and the write-ups and the policies that they've discussed with us in the past that he wasn't, they weren't contacted?
We have all that information. I know special district services assisted in changing some of the documentation, but I don't believe that they were hired for a consultant for the day of the meeting, for the day of the landowners' meeting, but I've, Penneog has accepted the position in the event that we do need an election.
Okay, thank you.
How is the, has there been any new updates on the changing of the code enforcement?
If you'd have got here on time, you would have known.
We already discussed it in the meeting.
I wasn't here ready for things. What's happening?
They're bringing in a consultant to find out what we can do in terms of changing the ordnance.
A consultant is necessary?
Huh?
A consultant is necessary?
Yeah. Right.
Okay. What, and how long do we think this is going to take?
Ask Mr. Hurley, I don't know.
I don't know.
Hmm?
Ask Mr. Hurley. He's the one in charge of the meeting.
You don't know?
No, I don't know. Why would I know?
We meet with the consultant on October 30th.
Excuse me?
We meet with the consultant, he's an attorney out of Naples, on October 30th.
Okay.
So after, after we meet with him and voice our concerns, then we're going to put together a plan of any changes that we need to take, that should take place to the ordinance formally. So he's going to assist us in that process.
What's the consultant's function in this?
Well, we're, we're using the consultant to ask questions regarding the concerns we have and whether or not legally we can make these changes to the ordinance. He, he's our attorney, he's going to be our consultant.
Okay. One other thing, we're seeing people put these basketball poles, that they have the weight on the bottom so they, they detach to anything, in the right-of-way. And a lot of them sit right next to the road, or some of them sit right next to the road. If you're not careful at night or sometimes, you can hit that dang thing. Why do we allow these, these things to go up in the right-of-way? Why don't we have them move them back to the driveway?
I'm not familiar with that, I'm sorry. We can, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Consultant? Can we actually go and move them or how do we do it? See, this is, this is, okay, this is a new thing in, in the basketball. The old days, you put in your driveway, you would cement it. Now they sell them, you wheel them out, you put them, a lot of areas don't have, the kids don't have places to play in the driveway, so they put them on the site. We have gone to the parents, we, you know, we've moved them, we've taken away, but we don't know if we can do it legally. We don't own them, they do.
Who owns the land? It's a right-of-way?
It's a right-of-way.
Who owns that?
The district. But we don't have the right to go in and just take something, because someone puts it there, we don't have the right and to, right to take it away.
Send them a letter and tell them it's in the district? And what do they say?
We send the letters, some move them, some don't.
Tell them if they don't move them, we'll pick them up.
That's what we're trying to find out. If legally, we can do it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Laurie Bertetto. I asked, I'm not going to come to the next three meetings, so would I get nine minutes?
Actually, you'll lose six.
Anyway, I agree with Mr. Coste about the fact that giving the residents the right to talk. There are many times, and I think an example, I don't know how long Mr. Coste spoke, but he had very pertinent things to talk about. And I think that when we reach that, you have to discuss it. You can't come in and say, well, we're going to stop here and go there. As a matter of fact, I have to comment, Kurt, for the fact that when we've had our meetings, that when we've had what I would consider important things to talk about, that he gave the residents the ability to talk and I appreciate that. And so I hope that, when you use the gavel, that you take that into consideration, is when we talk about important type things and one question leads to another, to another, that we have that resolve rather than cutting it off like the old days of, you know, your two and a half minutes are up or what have you and, and check out, so.
Well, maybe if the resident that complained would rescind his complaint, then we could carry on the way we have been.
Yeah. Well, I would think that the possibility of the person that complained, a complaint would be generated by a name and address rather than anonymous, so.
I didn't see any reason to find out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good morning. Pat Holmes, resident. I promise I will not take three minutes. Practice, I'll probably take about 35 seconds. First, the golf course is in great shape, but what I would like to see is I mark the hazards back on Turtle Run. It's, it's too rough to find golf balls over there, it slows play down and I, I think they should re-mark it as hazard. I know they say that the slope rating will change, but even if it does change, that's fine. Secondly, we say we have only lost 5% of our sod. I would like to know how much we've lost through the years. It's been tremendous. We put sod in late in the year and it won't grow. And a lot of times, we have to tear it out, put it back in or do something later on. My suggestion is, why don't we, instead of sodding it this late in October, we put dirt down, put down fescue and rye in those spots and then wait till next year before we re-sod. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. Rex, you identify yourself, please?
Beg your pardon?
Would you identify yourself, please?
Oh, I thought you said Rex and I wouldn't have to identify myself. Shucks. I don't have any long speech to make today. Of course, I've either lived in the district or worked for the district for 40 years. That's the reason that I look so beat up, is working for the district. You have something to look forward to. I would like to find out how much of this 32 million, 32 million, I'm kind of like the boy that couldn't say Taco Bell, but he couldn't speak Spanish either. So, how much of that 32 million do you plan to collect? What are you doing about it? Does that figure ring a bell with you? It's like 32 to 34 million dollars? Certainly does, I'm sure, with the staff. That's that past due list that's put out periodically by accounting people. One of these days, somebody with a whole lot of money is going to come in here and buy up all this stuff for practically nothing. In fact, some folks have been quoted as saying the land is worthless. But when they do, they're going to control this district. The landowners will control this district, no question about it, through the court or otherwise. Now, the county, you mentioned the county. I don't believe that the county has any right or even interest, as far as I know, to come in here and assess the people in this district for anything except for some service that the district might contract with the county to do for the district. That's not me talking, by the way. This is in writing, it's in the law, it's in the handbooks as to what procedure. Like the two years, that two years is established by statute that you can't do but so much within that two-year period until that two years runs out. So I'm hoping that we're tracking that. Also, is a notice put in our weekly or monthly information bulletin to some of the people out here, is that considered an official notice? I hope we'll take the time this year to notify the landowners and/or the other owners when we're going to have a meeting and if they have to qualify to run for something, that there's certain deadlines they have to, but we've got to do it officially, not in a, a weekly handout about Dave Halbig didn't shoot his age or something like that on the golf course. So this is serious business that we're involved in and we need to treat it as such. And we need to have the best information that we can get and we need to be very careful that we don't get lulled to sleep and somebody can come in with a bunch of money or maybe a little money, depending on the circumstances, and take over control of this district. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Back to the board. Any more comments? Meeting adjourned.
Yes, sir. I think that it's getting, it's getting worked on because we have, say, there, some of the bigger landowners here have, you know, big interests that might not change, so. It'd be a lot easier if we could get them on the board as well.
Without a doubt, it does. We're looking, we are looking into it, yes, sir. We're looking into it.